All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Landau County Commission meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highways Commissioners, April 22nd, 2021. All right, so, Brian, you want to lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna have a moment of silence. All right, moving forward, the Landau County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item that be taken out of order may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended, Patsy?
Thank you, no reports.
All right, Art?
No, I don't have any reports, but thanks for your indulgence while I went through my eye surgeries.
Oh, very good. Just a hospital board meeting, standard.
No, no report.
All right, very good, so staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, so, we will be having a patriotic social gathering on the 15th here in, it will be in Elquis Park, and that will be when Sheriff Richard Matt can make it down here to Battle Mountain to give us our plaque and all of his other stuff. We're gonna try to bring a few more people to town and make it a good time in the park and just make it a good patriotic event for the county. All of you are invited, it is not a meeting or to be convened as one, it's just a, just a social gathering.
Bert, excuse me, the 15th of May, June?
Yes.
May 15th.
May, okay.
And for your edification, calling it a social gathering takes it outside the legal definition of a meeting.
Okay.
And as long as there's a number of factors to take into account, as long as we're not trying to get around the open meeting laws, which we're not, it really is a meet and greet and a social patriotic meeting. And so it doesn't classify as a meeting, and as long as you don't turn it into one by getting together a quorum, the three of you getting together and discussing something, we're fine.
Well, everybody standing in different corners.
No, it's just-
No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Sometimes that's necessary.
Right.
And then, the Naval Air Station in Fallon reached out to me, they will be bringing in two Osprey out here next Tuesday, they'll be landing out here at the airport, so if you guys get any noise complaints or if you hear of anything, they are, they're airplanes that turn to helicopters, so they rotate the-
What day is that on?
That's, that's next Tuesday is when they're planning on landing them here.
They go right over my house?
So, yep, yep, so I told them that, you know, we welcome sounds of freedom, so they're-
Oh, yeah, what day is that actually on?
Oh. I'll have to look at my calendar real quick.
Just 'cause I wanna take doc.
It is, and I don't have a time for that, but I do, I can reach out and ask them what that would be, that is the 29th.
So, yeah, if you get a time and text them, so I can take doc.
No, that's, that is not the 29th, that is, I apologize, the 27th.
Twenty-seven.
It's Tuesday, I was looking at the Ts and I got Thursday.
So, if you can get a time for me, just so I can take doc out there and-
I will, I will try to get a rough time and see when they'll be here, so.
Very good, thank you.
That'll be kinda neat, and outside of that, everything else I have is on this agenda or will be on upcoming agendas.
Very good, all right, moving forward, for public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any, the discussion of these comments at the discretion of the board, all public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment?
I have public comment. I just wanted to say, like, this, this part thing that we're putting on this patriotic social gathering, make sure we have a flag there, I don't know if we have one in the thing, and I just, you know, I was citing the, the words of the pledge this morning, and I just, I've, I've looked at those words, every time I've said it, I've reflected on them at home. If any of you have a chance to reflect on those words, they mean a lot, it's like this country has fought so many wars to keep, wars to keep those words to mean something, and it's like, it's, I don't know if you realize it, but we're in a war right now in our country, and it's like, we have the privilege of being able to salute our flag, and there's a lot of schools in our country right now, they don't get that, they don't get that opportunity. So, I just, I just wanted to say that, so.
Very good, any other further public comment? All right.
Muted.
Consent agenda.
Unmuted.
All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one act without extensive discussion. Any members of the board or any citizen may request that an item taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during the, this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Landau County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of April 22nd, 2021 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of May 7th, 2020 Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Number three, approval of March 11th, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Number four, approval of March 22nd, 2021 Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Number five, approval of March 25th, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Number six, approval of April 8th, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Number seven, approval of April 14th, 2021 Special Budget Meeting Minutes. Number eight, approval of payroll change requests.
I'll make a motion, we approve one, approval of April 22nd, 2021 Agenda Notice, three, approval of March 11th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, and eight, approval of payroll change request.
Excuse me, I'd like, I would like to pull number one and discuss the agenda, please.
Okay.
And then I will second his motion for number three and number eight.
Okay. So, do we get pulled, pulled the item to discuss at first, or the one-
No, we've got the motion, we do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do the motion.
All right, so then, Patsy made, or Brian made the motion, Patsy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, I, I would like to amend the agenda, please. Number 16, best for discussion in support of the Nevada wildfire awareness campaign.
Wildlife?
No, wildfire.
It's supposed to be wildfire, it says wildlife.
Supposed to be wildfire.
Yeah, and, and the resolution does say wildfires, so with our legal opinion, we can actually change that, we don't have to pull it, so if I make a correction on that one. And then on number 20, it, it looks like it, it might be in combination with 19, but it's not clear enough, it doesn't really say who we are contracting with on this agenda, and so I would like to defer that to our next meeting and clarify that.
Legally, I think, I think we have to, that's-
Okay.
So-
There's three different parts to that, and that's why, there's non-agenda Sheriff's Office here, there's the Church Office in, or Austin, and then there's the Administrative Government itself.
Okay.
So, we need to make everyone aware, if they want to come and contest to report sterfing, that they can come on all three of them, in a speech computer or document.
So, with that, I make a motion that we approve the April 22nd amended agenda.
I'll second.
So, Patsy made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving forward, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills, it's, we're gonna pull out check number 211437, 211508, do we have any other checks that need to be pulled? Not hearing any, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the payment of bills.
I'll second that.
All right, Brian made the motion, Patsy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the, the two checks, 211437 and 211508.
All right, so, Patsy made the motion, Art seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain, they're made to my employer.
All right, very good, moving forward, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the interlocal contract between Landau County and the Department of Conservation, the Natural Resources, Nevada Division of Forestry. All right.
This is the insurance clerk?
Yes. So, a little-
A little backup on this, I know a few years ago is what, what I've been told anyway, and I, I do not have this to be fact, but somebody in this room, maybe Ted or maybe even Art or Patsy might remember this, we had lapsed, this contract had lapsed, and there were like a week between the renewal and the previous, and when, and there was a fire in that week, and it cost us a considerable amount more than the contract itself, just for that one week of lapse, so it's a-
It's not like last year.
I think almost $300,000 of memory service money.
And, and that was before the reason-
Yeah, and I, and I don't know if that was, I, I don't know if that was just a miscommunication between two departments, or if the ball was dropped, I'm not sure how that, how that took place.
Yeah, that, I hate to point fingers, I mean, I know how it happened.
Okay.
The person's not here any longer, so it doesn't matter.
All right. Should we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the interlocal contract between Landau County and the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources and Nevada Division of Forestry.
All right, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we need authorization on who signs that?
I believe in the, it should be in your backup, and is it?
Have, have the, yeah, have the Chair sign.
All right, so-
I'll amend that motion.
You want to amend that, who, Art, you want to amend that motion to have the Chair sign?
Oh, yeah, I'll amend my motion to have the Chair sign with agreement.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, moving forward, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the amended Resolution 2021-07 with reference to elder and disabled residents' rights guidance for Landau County citizens. So, on this, what was changed from?
So, in the very last paragraph on page one of your whereas, downward, it says, raise grievance with fear, that with was changed to without.
Okay. Maxid goes before-
Since we have, since we have the resolution in, do we have to read that again?
I think, I think it's just a motion to amend or modify, I think we just have to read the summary of the resolution, and then, and then the-
The change?
The change.
Thank you.
But the summary has to be read.
I will make a motion that we amend Resolution number 2021-07, the summary is a resolution recommending elder and disabled residents' rights guidance for residents of Landau County. These are recommendations only from the Landau County Health Board, and all medical and treatment decisions should be made after consultation with your medical provider, and we are amending that to change the one word with in that last paragraph to without.
Okay, so Patsy made the motion, seconded?
Seconded.
Oh, authorize the Chair to sign, sorry.
I've recorded it.
Everybody's signed, everybody has signed, Patsy made the motion, um, oh, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I'm going to nay on that one. So, moving forward, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the amended Resolution 2021-08 with reference to the vaccine and informed consent guidance for Landau County citizens. All right, so-
This change is in the very first paragraph where it says whereas, where it says use authorization of food and drug administration, that of is changed to or.
Okay, so, motion?
Which paragraph was that in, listen?
The very first, whereas. Where it says or.
Oh, and that, that was changed, okay.
Yep, I don't think that people understand they're in an experiment.
So, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we amend Resolution number 2021-08, summary stating, a resolution recommending vaccine-informed consent guidance for residents of Landau County.
Second.
These are, these are recommendations only from the Landau County Health Board, and all medical and treatment decisions should be made after consultation with our medical provider, and the change being made is from of to or, is that correct?
Second.
All right, so Brian made the motion, Art seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving forward, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the contract between Landau County and Elko County Library Services, or to discuss and decide whether to proceed with Landau, with a Landau County library, all right.
All right, so we did do a little bit of research, Ms. Norma Fowler from the state, super nice lady, and we have exchanged some emails and a phone call, and is what it comes down to is Mineral County and Pershing County have their own libraries, they're similar, similar size, and they're paying roughly around $300,000 a year, I think the exact number is $275,000, $213 for Mineral County, and $257,347 for Pershing County. Now, is how the breakdown of that works is $210,000 in Mineral County is wages and benefits for their librarians and the people that are working for them, which, so that breaks down, $64,000 is what it actually costs them to, to run their library without wages and benefits, and that's including their building, and their books and archives and everything else that goes with it. Then Pershing County, out of that $257,000 that they have, $188,236 is wages and benefits, and that leaves us with $69,111 that is for the building and the, and the archives and the books and, and other material, material that they have. So, so with that said, I think that leaves us kind of at the, where the numbers are for us, it's gonna cost us roughly, you know, $70,000 to run our own without wages and benefits, and if we decide to add wages and benefits to that, which we would have to in Austin for sure, you have a minimum, by NRS, you have a minimum of 20 hours that you have to keep both libraries open a week, which is fairly simple if we combined it with the Civic Center. Now, if the library were to change and go to the old courthouse, as there's been talk of, you know, that'd be years down the road, obviously, because it's gonna take a while to get the old courthouse back renovated, but then we would have to hire a librarian or separate staff move over there to manage that. Austin wouldn't change, we'd still have to have an employee down there to, to put in, you know, 15 hours a week or whatever they are, but that, that kind of sums up what it would cost us to run our own county library.
Excuse me, but you're saying just a county, we wouldn't actually be, it wouldn't be a public library with the state, right, it would just be our own county library?
Yes.
That's our understanding at this time.
That's, that's, that's the information you're giving us, right?
Yeah, so, so I guess, and this is, this is information that myself and Ted have to go through a little bit deeper, but from, from Norma, she's, she's saying that the NRS applies to both county and public or state libraries, so that, that it all falls under one, now we have, myself and Ted have, we don't completely agree with that, but there's gotta be some more research done to make sure that, that we, that everybody's seeing this the same way and that we aren't misunderstanding it, I believe there, there can't be the same rules for both, or else nobody would ever do their own, fall under the same rules, everybody in the state would be under one, is my assumption. Now, I could be very wrong in that, so I don't want to be misleading, that's why I used Pershing and Mineral County as comparables, because they're comparable size. Now, Round Mountain, they spend over a million dollars a year on their library, but the mine there funds pretty much that entire community, and it is like the, the Mecca of libraries.
The hall of libraries.
Yes. Spoke highly of, you know, everywhere, but, and that's, that's one of the mines things there, is they, you know, they, they also run their grocery store and their gas station and pretty much their whole community, which ties into the innovation zone type, type of thoughts, but, not to get off topic, so, the numbers there stand for themselves, and I don't know which way you guys would like to go, I know that these numbers, also, I'd like to point out, that the 64,000 and 69,000 is including their buildings and their, their heat and all that other stuff, which ours is already inclusive in one. And there may be some confusion on how this is working, but currently, we don't have any say in what grants are put in for, or what the stipulations and ties to the grants are going through a cooperative agreement, very much like some of the other agreements we've had in the past, that we've all seen where they've taken money from us, even though this board has voted against giving the money that way, we've been outvoted by a, by a cooperative group because we were willing to join them, so-
And, and they can have grants, they can use, they can float grants or apply for grants, and we, we don't have any say in it.
That's right. So, I believe that's how we ended up with the E-rate, and if, if, if somebody's on the line, they could correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that's how we ended up with the E-rate, and the, and the additional funds that we put in the budget to pay for the E-rate system was through that kind of process, they put in for that without, you know, we don't have the, the local control, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody's on the line there, but that's my-
My biggest telling point for me is we can control what we have in our library, that we have a state library, we can't control it, and I don't want any progressive-
Unmuted.
-critical race theory, any of that progressive stuff in our library, it doesn't belong there, we stood up for the Constitution, and that's why I want to vote for this, so we can control what we have.
Well, Commissioner, what it, bottom line of what Bartolo is, is saying is that Elko has 100% control of our library.
Right, right.
In all decisions, in employment, in everything else.
Well, anytime we subcontract with somebody, we usually give them that type of authority, and on, as far as your information on the internet, that was done through JoJo, through the governor's office, and supposedly that is a discounted rate, so we would have to have a separate internet service that we pay separately for, but I just have a couple of quick comments on the public library part, because I think this is so important, and I've used it all my life, and I know even, even now as an adult, when I'm traveling, and, and my husband and I would always go back to, like, we went through the Panama Canal, we went to the Normandy Beaches for D-Day, we wanted information, so we'd just go to the public library, and they'd order the books for us, because they didn't have them here in Battle Mountain, and of course, we didn't have them in Austin. My husband was a history buff, he would read something and say, I want to read that book, I want to, so, again, that's what you do, you get to order from the other libraries because you can't possibly say, say everything that everybody wants to read, and, and one of the annoying things that I remember happening is, I do a lot of audio when I'm traveling, and sure shoot, and I went through 11 hours of audio, and the last tape, I couldn't understand a word, not a word, and I'm going, how did this end, how did this end? So, the first call I made was to the Austin Library and go, find this book for me, somebody must have this book, so I can read the end of it, so, I love the public libraries, I use them all the time, I, I go to the ones in Reno, I go to the ones in Round Mountain, Elko, Las Vegas, and, and I get to turn them in, I mean, it takes a couple weeks to read a thick book, at least, sometimes more, and I can turn them in in Battle Mountain and turn them in in Austin, and so I, I'm just a real proponent of, of the public libraries, and I think if we're going to do something like this, not that we shouldn't, but I do think we should be really thoughtful about it, and, and even perhaps do a survey with our groups that are using it, because a lot of people don't use it, they use Kindle and, and such, and, and they don't go to the library all that often, but I, I would like to see us at least do the contract now, because it's short distance, and then really look at it this year to see what, what you would like to do, and if you want to pull out and be our own or whatever, that we have all the information, especially from the folks that are using our libraries, I think that's important, and I, I hope you consider that.
I, I think that, I actually have a problem with us having our own library, as long as we keep up on the information that we're getting, and that we still have the services there, and make sure that we're being able to utilize, if it's not from the other libraries, obviously, that we're connected in and figure out how those other libraries that are private, that are county, county, excuse me, how they're doing it, to make sure that we're getting the information that the people need. So, beyond that, I mean, as long as we're not just sitting there and only allowing people to check out the books that are there, if we're of no other service, then that, so that's one thing, we just have to make sure that we're covering that, is when people are looking for stuff, need to order stuff, that we figure out how and make sure we do that, beyond that, I'm fine with.
Then we'd have to go through and be a public library, and if we do that, then we have to, what, have a director with a master's degree?
No, that's, I, no, they don't have, in those other libraries, they are able to utilize other, other ways of getting that information, because I'm sure they're not only have the inventory that they have on the floor, so, any other comment?
If you would like my office to do a more exhaustive research on chapters 378 and 379 prior to making determination, I would suggest that you put this on the next agenda, and I'll do that between now and-
So, let's, well, and we can do that, just so we know, because we, our contract isn't out until July, right? We still have-
Yeah, I think one of the reasons that they wanted this discussion and, and decision is so they could start archiving their books and separating out whose is whose, and, and start the separation, I know it does change some of the funding for the other counties that are, that are in this mutual agreement, so there's, they're gonna have to send out some, some contracts and some language to other counties that would affect what they pay.
Eureka, we're talking about Eureka.
And what were, I'm sorry, what were the other libraries that are of their own county, in the own county?
Pershing and Mineral, are the two that I, that I-
So, Hocken and Love Lock.
And Love Lock, yes, you know, but we could reach out to Love Lock, or I mean, to Humboldt and some of these other counties, I just, you know, that's, that's the information that I have right now to give to you guys, I don't have a lot more I can-
I'm all right moving, I mean, I'm, I'm okay moving forward, just as long as we stay up to date with our books and our information for people, so, is there a motion, or what do we want to do?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the county proceed with the county library.
Second.
Ted can check on that.
Do you want to make that tentative to what our legal counsel finds out in his extensive research?
So, yeah, so we can make an-
Depending on what Ted finds out.
I'm good with that.
I'll second that motion.
So, Art made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, very good, moving forward.
All right, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove Resolution 2021-11 in opposition of the innovation zones.
So, we have, we do have Dr. Troy Ross, who's our county health officer, he is on the phone, you'll have to unmute yourself, Troy.
If you want to talk about the innovation zone.
If you would like to.
Aren't we on number six?
We're talking about the innovation zone.
Oh, I apologize, we are not to that, yes.
Is that going, honey? I got all confused with all these.
Depending on who wants to read it, gets to make the motion. It's a short one.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2021-11 of the Board of Landau County Commissioners. Summary, a resolution opposing Governor Sizlak's innovative zone bill as drafted. Whereas the Governor of the State of Nevada has drafted a bill in preparation for proposing legislation which creates innovation zones within Nevada counties, and whereas the Landau County Board of County Commissioners has reviewed the draft bill, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners is concerned with the economic, social, and environmental impacts creating innovation zones will cause, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners finds the draft bill does not address many, does not address, that's a typo there, I believe, should say many?
I'll amend it right now.
Yeah, so, does not address many concerns to Landau County, that, that's another typo, we'll change that, right, concerns that Landau County has, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners recognizes that retaining new forms, is that a, is that right? If it is, I don't know what that word means.
It's supposed to be retaining.
Was it I, retaining?
Retaining?
Yeah.
Recognizes that retaining new forms of businesses and fostering economic development may have long-term positive economic effects for Landau County and the state, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners- And whereas the Board of County Commissioners finds the traditional forms and functions of local government, political subdivisions existent under Nevada statute are not inadequate to provide, are not inadequate to provide the flexibility and resources conducive to making the state a leader in attracting and retaining new forms and types of businesses and fostering economic development in emerging techno- technologies and innovative industries. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners finds an alter alternative form of local government, political subdivisions is not an appropriate means and necessary measure to further economic development within the state. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners finds the state and local governments working together to foster economic development in emerging technologies and innovative industries is an appropriate means to further economic development with the state. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners welcomes an open dialogue about the potential benefits in the innovation zone bill and how it can be amended to address the concerns of Lander County. Now there now therefore be it resolved that the Lander County Board of County Commissioners oppose the innovation zone bill as drafted and unveiled on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Be it further resolved that Lander County is extremely concerned about the impact innovation zones as proposed would have on the economic, social, and environmental climate of Lander County. And as such, the Board of County Commissioners shall be included in the decision pertaining to the local governments and innovation zones with Lander County.
Second.
Pass and adopt this twenty-second day of April, twenty twenty-one and authorize all commissioners to sign.
With corrections made, so all Brian made the motion, Art second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I have a question. Um, so who are we actually going to be sending this to? All of our legislatures or?
That's what I would like to do.
Yeah, send it out. Send it to the governor and stuff.
Well, true, but I'm I'm just wanting on the record who all we are sending it to. It will includes all.
We could include whoever you would like. You let me know.
I think you need to include the military because I see this as a form of treason.
Should be sent to all political bodies. Um, is that what we want, he?
All the legislatures.
Yeah, the legislature.
And the governor.
Of course.
Yeah.
Every county commission.
Yeah, and every county commission.
Thank you.
Aye.
All right, we're moving forward.
Do we take a vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I thought so, yeah, because you made them, well, yeah, didn't we, and we got that far because you made the motion, Art second, all in favor.
And the motion included the amendments?
Yeah, the corrections.
So I'll amend my motion to uh state who we're sending it to.
Yeah.
So I make sure this all.
And that that was the uh legislatures, the governor and county commissioners throughout the state.
Yep.
All right, so we'll just do the all in favor again.
Aye.
Aye.
Make sure we got that. All right, very good, moving forward. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the contract between Lander County and 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 Dr. Troy Ross at Lander County Health Office and to approve and appoint of Dr. Peters as a deputy health officer with the appropriate um remuneration, what is that word?
Remuneration.
Remuneration.
A word we all should love.
Yeah.
So. So I was a little early on you last time, Dr. Troy. If you're uh if you're on the phone, we're unmuted on our side, you'd have to unmute yourself on your side.
I'm uh I'm speaking, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you, okay. Um, in regard to you taking me on in a contract to be your health officer, I certainly am wholeheartedly going to commit myself to your your public health goals and needs.
Is he all right with the provisions of the contract?
Yeah, are you good with the provisions of the contract?
Oh, oh, yes, I am. I I I signed the copy and sent that to you uh again yesterday, Bert.
Yes, sir, I have that one on my desk. I just wanted it on the record so the commission knew that you were well aware.
Second question is, is is he in fact uh appointing Dr. Peters as deputy health officer?
Yes, did you hear that?
Uh, yes, uh, I'm not familiar with Dr. Peters, but if the commission supports him in that position, I certainly will back that.
Well, you have to forward that that recommendation.
Yeah, we we just need something from you, um, you know, that you that you support that recommendation moving forward and.
Okay.
And then the commissioners will approve that, your recommendation, Doctor.
All right, I will send that request to you and I will support his appointment.
And then Dr. Peters will continue to work with the health nurse?
Of course. He doesn't, his role, his role doesn't change other than he's going to assist um Dr. Troy Ross in um in moving forward and bettering our whole system that we're trying to put together.
Okay.
Yeah, he'll become the, yeah, the deputy, exactly. I'll make with that, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion.
You might want to consider what type of remuneration unless you want to leave that to uh your uh Mr. Bartolo here.
Would you guys like to put a number on on that or would you like us to work out of that sixty thousand that we've budgeted and once we get close to that, we come back before you?
Yeah, exactly. I'll let you work with him on it.
Yeah, you more.
And the contract is for one more year, this year through twenty twenty-two, right?
It's a two, yes, it's a two, yes.
You good?
Hi, anybody else have anything?
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion uh that we approve the contract between Lander County and Dr. Troy Ross as Lander County Health Officer and to approve the appointment of Dr. Peters as deputy health officer with appropriate remuneration.
Second.
All right, um, Brian made the motion, Art second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. He's on the moving forward.
Oh, you're on the next one, too.
Yeah, and so uh for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, um, resolution twenty twenty-one twelve banning uh vaccine passports. Okay, so.
Yes, so for this resolution, would you care for me to discuss the issue or read the resolution?
I guess, I would like to hear, um, I mean, I have a brief understanding of it, but if you can give some more information, please.
Certainly. Well, I think what the key issue to be considered is that this all hinges upon finding a way to identify people who are going to be allowed to participate in normal society or be restricted from doing so because of the vaccination status. And that is fundamentally a a very inappropriate and and I would suggest illegal approach to how people are managed in society. This coronavirus vaccine, as has been discussed in the past, is experimental. And as such, there is no person who can be required to receive this vaccination. Since it is voluntary, whether a person has been vaccinated or not, should have no bearing on the person's ability to participate normally in society. And so with that in mind, I do think that it is key to step forward and ensure that it's recognized by the proper governmental authorities that such a vaccine passport not be allowed. And at first, it would be put up as something that would be a convenience, but I think it's very clear by watching what's occurring at the national level and international level that the intent is for this to be a a mandate rather than a voluntary type of documentation.
Has there ever been such a thing done where they mandated to have uh proof that you've been been vaccinated for something like this?
Certainly in the school setting and in in employment. But that has to do with vaccines that are licensed and and accepted for common use. And there's still provisions to opt out and there's still conditions that set the confidentiality of a person's health information. And all of that is destroyed by this vaccine passport where the intent will be to ensure that you can produce that document to get into a a public event or to travel on public transportation. And it just completely destroys medical protective health information and medical confidentiality.
To piggyback off that question too, Kathy, it happened in World War Two. That's what the Germans did to the Jews. If you didn't have a passport, you didn't cross.
That's right.
They seg- they segregated, right? That's exactly what they're doing here. So let's not cover it up and call it something different than what it is. That's what it is.
And I believe that this was not a pandemic, I believe this was a plandemic.
Yeah, exactly.
One hundred percent.
Well, I just, yeah, this is.
Okay, I'll go ahead and try and tackle this one.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero two one dash twelve. Summary, a resolution prohibiting the Lander County Commission or any Lander County Board, Agency Department, Political Subdivision Agent, or or assigns from producing and or issuing a COVID nineteen vaccine passport or requiring one for any purpose or from providing information of any individual's COVID nineteen vaccine status to anyone or to any entity for inclusion in a COVID nineteen vaccine passport program. Whereas an individual's COVID nineteen vaccination status and records are protected, health information, which should not be shared by mandate. And whereas COVID nineteen vaccine passports reduce individual freedom and will harm patient privacy. And whereas no government or business entity should compel disclosure of protected health information by mandating a vaccine passport for COVID nineteen or by otherwise conditioning receipt of services or as an individual's on an individual's COVID nineteen vaccination status. And whereas requiring COVID nineteen vaccine passports for taking part in everyday life, such as for employment, attending school, or sporting event, patronizing a restaurant, or going to a movie theater, would create two classes of citizens based on vaccination. And whereas Jim Crow laws and regulations institutionalized segregation, discrimination, and economic, educational, and social disadvantages for African Americans. And whereas Jim Crow laws were upheld in eighteen ninety-six in the case in the case of Plessy versus Ferguson, in which the U.S. Supreme Court laid out its separate but equal legal doctrine for facilities that segregated and discriminated against African Amer- African Americans. And whereas in nineteen fifty-four, the U.S. Supreme Court declared segregation of public schools unconstitutional in the landmark case Brown versus Board of Education. Generally, the remaining Jim Crow laws were overruled by the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. And whereas COVID nineteen vaccine passports and segregation and discrimination based on an individual's COVID nineteen vaccination status create the conditions of a new Jim Crow two point zero. And whereas the crimes of World War Two led to the establishment of the Nuremberg Code, which lays out requirements for medical experimentation on human subjects, the most important provision of the code being voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. And they give us a website, HTTPS, semicolon slash slash history dot NIH dot GOV slash display slash history slash Nuremberg plus code. And whereas the right to bodily integrity and self-ownership of one's body is globally recognized as inalienable and protected human rights, to preserve bodily integrity, all medical interventions, including vaccination, must be made with full informed consent and without conditions of coercion, including the restriction of free movement through and participation in normal society. And whereas Nevada law does not require Nevadans to receive a COVID nineteen vaccine, and it is a personal choice, and where some Nevadans, because of their age, medical condition, religious, or philosophical objection, are unable to receive a vaccine. And whereas the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, FDA, has granted emergency use authorization, EUA, for COVID nineteen vaccines that are not yet FDA-licensed pursuant to the Project Bioshield Act of two thousand and four, twenty-one USC, and AMP three six zero BBB dash three. And whereas the federal stat- statute expressively recognizes that each individual has the option to accept or refuse administration of the product under an emergency use authorization, twenty-one USC, three six zero BBB dash three, E one A two L L L. And whereas the U.S. Supreme Court ruled vaccines unavoidably unsafe in Bruceowitz versus Wythe LLC, two thousand and eleven. And whereas all COVID nineteen vaccine manufacturers in the entire chain from production, distribution, to administration have been granted immunity from liability for adverse offense. And whereas COVID nineteen vaccines use new platform technology such as small M, large R, and A, and nanotechnology, making them both innately experimental and significantly divergent from any previous vaccines, which necessitates extensive gold standard safety studies, which have not begun. And whereas COVID nineteen vaccine passports are being developed primarily as digital vaccination records, which are inherently vulnerable to privacy breaches, manipulation, and integration into a digital tracking system like blockchain that enrolls the participant with or without consent into a do-to-do system for one's participation in society. A do-to-do system dictates that one must do something, such as receive a COVID nineteen vaccine, in order to be able to do another thing, such as have a job or access to food in a grocery store. And it's the next generation of a show-me-your-papers totalitarian technocratic regime. And whereas Nevada Governor Sislak is championing innovation zones, which would establish a new political subdivision of autonomous, self-governing blockchain-powered smart cities functioning outside of county ordinances. Innovation zones are focused on the development of advanced technologies such as blockchain, Internet of Things, I, small O, T, artificial intelligence, robotics, biometrics, and renewables, and will use digital blockchain technology to fully integrate the smart city operating systems and the residents' personal information, including health, finance, education, utilities, judicial, and social media, thereby creating a complete digital control system. And whereas it is discriminatory, coercive, and a violation of inalienable human and civil rights for either the government or the private sector to require that an individual show proof of vaccination to participate in normal in normal society. And whereas some states are exploring the creation of COVID nineteen vaccine passports, and New York is promoting a software program that will facilitate the exclusion of Americans who have not received a COVID nineteen vaccine from receiving services and fully participating in public life. And whereas the Board has serious concerns that implementing a COVID nineteen vaccine passports will violate will violate Lander County residents' medical privacy rights, prejudice those who have not been vaccinated, and cause division among our populace. Whereas it is contrary to the core values and principles of this Board, of the U.S. Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the global body of human rights doctrines, to mandate the COVID nineteen vaccine or issue COVID nineteen vaccine passports. And whereas it is necessary to prohibit discrimination against individuals who have not been vaccinated against COVID nineteen. And whereas it is necessary to protect the fundamental rights and privacies of Lander County residents and the free flow of commerce within the county. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lander County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim and declare as follows. Number one, no Lander County Commission, Board, Agency Department, Political Subdivision, Agent, or Assign shall, A, require as condition for accessing state services or facilities that an individual produce proof that he or she has received a COVID nineteen vaccine; B, produce and issue a COVID nineteen vaccine passport for the purpose of certifying that an individual has received a COVID nineteen vaccine; or C, provide information of an individual's COVID nineteen vaccine status to any. status to any person, company, or government entity for inclusion in a COVID-19 vaccine passport program. Number two, businesses in Lander County are prohibited from requiring patrons or customers to provide any documentation certifying COVID-19 vaccination or post-transmission recovery to gain access to, entry upon, or service from the businesses. Number three, public and private business entities are prohibited from basing employment on requiring proof of COVID-19 vaccination status, or making employment decisions based on such vaccination status. Number four, all county agencies shall work to ensure businesses comply with this order. Number five, all businesses must comply with this order to be eligible for grants or contracts funded through county revenues. Number six, the Lander County Board of Health shall engage with other counties in Nevada to convene an ad hoc working group for the purpose, for the purpose of promulgating a statement of the ethical and legal considerations around the use of, one, new platform technology in being used in vaccines such as small M, capital R, and A, and nanotechnology, and two, digital ledger and tracking systems. This resolution does not, and shall not be construed to prohibit, restrict, or otherwise limit the right of an individual to access his or her own personal health information under state or federal law. Passed and adopted this twenty-second day of April two thousand and twenty-one, and authorized the Chair to sign.
I have a couple things real quick. So basically, these vaccines, they haven't even cleared animal clinical trials. Every animal that they've, they've injected this, these vaccines into it has killed them, right? So when, when Art makes statements that you are the lab rats, that's exactly what is going on. These have not been cleared. Secondly, this resolution is very strong. Is it possible to even take it a step further and make it an ordinance within our county that anybody that's found doing this stuff is guilty of a crime? Because that's what it is.
Yes.
It is a crime.
I would support that a hundred percent.
So, in doing, in doing.
That's, I have a que- that's a question to the legal counsel.
I, I will research that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we shouldn't discuss it anymore.
So, okay, so on this, which this is so overwhelming to me, it's unbelievable. However, in doing some, a little bit of research and doing some digging on some of this stuff, there are actually throughout the United States, there are some businesses that when people are applying for jobs in the hospitality, if you haven't received a vaccine, they are not allowing you to get, have that, not even apply, go further if you haven't been vaccinated. I noticed the wedding pla- there was a show doing on wedding planning for the summer, and the wedding planner said one of their regulations is if you have not been vaccinated, then you're not allowed, you will not be allowed to attend these weddings. I'm, and I'm just, I'm appalled and overwhelmed by this. And the other thing was, and I've seen this go on, and we've all seen this go on with some employers, and I don't think that they're realizing what they're doing when they're saying this, but they're giving incentives to their employees to get the vaccines, and which is a personal choice. If you want to get the vaccine, you get the vaccine, but there should never be a, that, anything being held, whether it's a gift card or a donut over someone's head, that fear, makes them fear if they don't get the vaccine, they have the possibility of losing their jobs, and especially monetarily when they said, oh, you know, you'll get a two hundred dollar incentive if you get the vaccine. Well, you know, the two hundred dollars to some people is a lot of money, and so it's very sad, you know, because I've been digging in this just a little bit because it kind of, in the military, a little bit of that is if you don't get your shot, you don't get to go out on the ship. And so, and I can say that firsthand. If you don't get the shot, you don't go out. And so, it's, you get to let, be left in quarantine for fourteen days, and then, you know, on their circle back, they'll come back and get you. And this just saddens me and is overwhelming, and it's just, this whole thing is very sad how it's come to this, so anyhow.
I have a couple of things to say about the vaccine. Number one, it's an experiment, folks, plain and simple. Johnson and Johnson comes out throwing blood clots after you take the vaccine. Pfizer, one shot. Oh, no, no, you gotta take two. Oh, maybe three. But here's the information that I found out personally that is really kind of, it's very disturbing. My wife had a mammogram. The first question that they asked Cindy was, did you have the two-shot vaccini- vaccine? And she said, no, why? Well, because women that take the two-shot vaccine are developing breast issues. Every woman who gets a mammogram from here on out is going to be asked that question, number one. That's not getting out to the public. That's not on your six o'clock news. That's not on CNN, HLN, it's not on Fox, it's not on Newsmax, or OANN. It's nowhere until you go into the doctor.
All right, so Patsy made the motion, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Patsy made, JR second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're gonna ask the DA to look into.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, moving forward. So, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the appointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Economic Development Authority, which currently has two vacancies. New terms are from July first, two thousand and twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and to consider all of the following applications, and Sarah Edgar is our applicant. So do I have a motion?
Oh, I make a motion if we place Sarah Edgar in this position.
Second.
So, Art made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute break, please. At least we have a clock to tell us when we're moving forward for Porter Group, for update only regarding the federal government affairs. So do we have them on the line, or what are we doing with that?
They should be on the computer. It's Chris and Anna, and John.
Hi there, this is Chris Porter. John Porter's on the line as well, and Anna Leibert's from the Porter Group.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great, good morning, everybody. This is John Porter. It's a, a real honor to be able to join you today. I wish we could be there on purpose, in, in person, which hopefully we will soon. We're about twenty-five hundred miles away, as you can imagine, but look forward to getting back there just as soon as possible. A, a little bit about Porter Group, and I, I've been given orders by my son as a, as a former, a, as a.
Did we lose you?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now.
So, so I had the honor of serving as a member of the Boulder City Council for ten years, and served as mayor for four of those years, and then served in the Nevada State Senate, and then most recently as a member of Congress. And I must tell you, the most difficult position I held was that of local government, so I applaud you and appreciate what you're doing from firsthand experience. Again, I mentioned that my son, Chris, knows that I'm a former politician, and he's given me strict orders that I can only talk for a few moments because of the, the length of your meeting as well. I want to take a, a quick moment, kind of walk through the environment of what's happening in DC, a little bit about the, from a voting perspective and member-to-member relations. Chris is gonna walk through policy and a number of things that are happening, and then what's specific on, on the lands bill, which I do believe there's some great news today. But a little bit about the environment, I know many of you have had the chance to visit DC. Right now, facilities are still basically in a lockdown. It's very difficult, and now as a former member of Congress, I still have access and am there as much as I can be, but because of the COVID initially, and now because of what happened in, you know, early January, January sixth, the heightened security has made it very difficult for access into the Capitol, on the Capitol grounds, but we look forward sometime in the fall, hopefully that you can join us in DC, and we'll be able to visit our members of the delegation in person in Washington. We'll keep you informed of that. You know, what does that really mean? You know, it, it actually, the lockdown actually heightens the partisan challenges that we're facing in Washington. And part, part of that certainly is the environment across the country, you know, engagement by so many people in the process, and, and people expressing their opinion in, of course, lots of ways, from social media, you know, to, to, you know, other ways. But one of the challenges, and I know as commissioners, we appreciate that you don't see each other all the time, and there are open meeting rules that you work with, but at least if you want a conversation within the rules, of course, you're able to talk to another commissioner. And it's difficult for members of Congress now to even talk about, you know, legislation they're working on collectively. There's challenges for them to, to actually advocate for certain things, and it's difficult for them to, you know, talk about new ideas, so that's kind of been lost based upon the current environment on the Hill. Now, again, member-to-member relations is, is critical, but we're doing our best to try to bridge that the best we can. On a, a Lander specific, and I know Chris is gonna talk about this some more, you're building upon a solid regional approach to things, and right now, that is really imperative, especially when it comes to the lands, lands bill, but I applaud you for, you know, looking at things, not only, of course, for the county, but what does it mean to the region, and what does it mean to the state? From a poli- policy perspective, I, I'm, as a former member, I've, I've never seen an open checkbook, and as, I'm a public servant at heart, and I will tell you, it does make me nervous, from a government perspective, but selfishly, for the county, when we made our proposal, and thank you again, we're honored to be a part of your family, we encourage that we didn't just work on the lands bill, we wanted to make sure we could be a full-service organization. Again, having been a councilman and understanding how busy everybody is as commissioners and your staff, we want to make sure we could provide you perspective on the full gamut of, of services from a government affairs team. But what I'm agreeing with this is I know we're working closely and finding opportunities for funding. Again, my perspective is that I'm cautiously optimistic, but we encourage that since the money is available, we want to make sure that Lander County, the Chair, and members are at the table to at least be able to have the opportunity of engaging. So, I, I want to turn it over to Chris, and again, let you know we're here to help. We're unique as well as a, as a government affairs team. There are, there are ten of us, and actually eleven at times, because we do have some, a team member that comes with other expertise. But as eleven members, we all work on Lander County. We have daily meetings, we run through A to Z areas that our whole team can assist with. You know, Major General Herbert is, you know, with us, Anna who's on the call as well, Steph, a number of well-seasoned experts in the congressional process. So, again, unlike some of our competitors that use different formats, I'm proud to say every one of our team is very familiar, and works and tries to help with Lander County every day. So with that, unless there's any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thanks, John, appreciate that. Hello, everyone. Great being here today. I echo my father's statement that we wish we were as opposed to back here in the small in DC, but thank you again. I also would like to say that it's been a great pleasure to work with your team, and also with Bert. I think they're vital part of your organization, and it's just been, it's been wonderful. They've, they've, they've been right here with us the entire time, and we do speak any other week, if not more, on various issues, especially the Land County Land Management and Conservation Act. Which brings me to that subject.
Hey, Chris.
We've been working closely with Senator Rosen's office.
Chris.
Chris.
Chris, can you maybe, maybe reset your mic a little bit different? You're coming through really mumbled on our end.
Oh, I apologize. I'll. How does it sound?
A little better there, let's try that for a minute. We'll interrupt you again if, if it's not.
Is it, okay, so it's better?
Yes.
Okay, great, I apologize for that. I will, I would just say that, so we've been working closely with Senator Rosen's office, and of course with Congressman Amade's office. We've, of course, numerous meetings and calls with the both of them. A, part of the reintroduction via Senator Rosen's office, they asked us to get some feedback from some of the ranchers in regards to the lands bill. There has been a few concerns, I guess, over grazing, and of course, fire season repair and reseeding. Senator Rosen has included going with Jim there into the bill that would allow ranchers to maintain their, their current operations without there being a disruption, which I think is a huge victory for them and also for the county. Oh, we, we shared that information with the rancher, questioned detailed information coming from Porter Group and also from Senator Rosen's office. We've all reached out and spoke to him about that. So, which also brings us to, prior to this call, literally just prior to the call, we got the final version of the bill, they had to, of course, add that particular language to make sure that those, the rancher was able to maintain his current level of activity on ranch, and also, I think they made some section changes as well. Right before this call, we got it back from the Legislative Council. So Senator Rosen is going to be introducing the bill next week, which is, which is great news. We still have to do a couple acreage numbers for the one pager that was developed by the Senator's office, but other than that, we're on, on a great pace. Of course, the Senator, along Senator Rosen, along with Senator Cortez Masto, will be requesting a legislative hearing on the bill in the Senate Committee on Energy and Natural Resources, which is the Committee of Jurisdiction for the lands bill. Senator Cortez Masto and Senator Rosen have already spoke with the Chairman of that committee, Mr. Manchin, about the Lander County Lands, Lands Bill, and he's already offered his assistance in moving that bill. Both Senators have asked Porter Group, along with the Corporation of Lander County, to assist them in drafting the Senator's statements for the committee when they, when they introduce the bill. So that's something that we'll be working with your team on as well. With all that being said, I think we're in a great place for the introduction in moving through committee, but there's still a lot more work to be done, as you understand, the political environment in DC is a little bit crazy right now. So there's a lot more that goes into just writing the bill, introducing the bill, and getting a committee hearing on the bill. What we've been doing is taking additional steps to raise awareness of the Lander County Lands Bill nationally, and also working with regional partners like John had talked about earlier. So Tuesday of this week, Secretary Holland, who's the new Secretary of Department of Interior, she had testified during the House Appropriations Subcommittee on Interior, Environment, and Related Agencies. The Porter Group had drafted questions on behalf of the county to be asked, in particular in regards to the lands bills. Congressman Amade and Congresswoman Lee asked during the hearings, if they do sit on that appropriations committee. We did that in, in a sort of place, as well of a placeholder for the conversations to come, but we specifically asked about SNPLMA, which is the Southern Nevada Public Land Management Act, which is a vehicle that's used to pass the lands bills in Nevada. And she had good news on that front, that she believes that a program like SNPLMA, this is a successful program for the state of Nevada, should continue, so we shouldn't get, based on that, shouldn't get too much respect from the Department of Interior, but again, we wanted to raise that to their attention. Also, with our conversations with the entire Nevada delegation, the way that they're gonna work this is the Nevada lands bills are gonna be wrapped into one package. So I'm talking land, Southern Nevada lands bill, Washoe County lands bill, Carson City and the rest. All those lands bills will be wrapped into one package, kind of like a mini omnibus, I guess, or mini mini bus bill, where they all will move together into one package. So with that in mind, we've been working with, um, regional and statewide partners. Um, so Southern Nevada lands has already been introduced. And so our main focus has been on Northern Nevada. Now, we created, uh, the Northern Nevada Economic Rescue Coalition, which is a local municipality's and community partner. Um, the local governments that have, uh, that are participating, again, this is still a new, um, a new coalition, but it has the City of Sparks, City of Burnley, um, Washoe County, Washoe RTC, and Lander County has also participated in conversations, um, with that as well. Um, we have community stakeholders, uh, stakeholders a part of this, um, Mayappa Northern Nevada, uh, Northern Nevada Builders Association, Mayor Sparks Chamber of Commerce, and First and Tenille title. Um, and the reason for this is that we have to raise the importance of lands bills, uh, to economic development, also land management in Northern Nevada. And it takes more than, um, just the municipalities to get this done. So we built that, um, built that coalition and looking for for new members all the time. Um, most members of Congress think that, um, public lands are a public park, uh, somewhere in a city or or a national park. They don't understand, uh, the West, which is very unique. So we've been working on that as well. Um, in addition to that, we also set up a lands retreat for the Nevada delegation land staffers. Um, that's, that's going to take place tomorrow, um, which Lander will be a part of that conversation. Um, there's going to be representatives from Nevada delegation. Um, so all the experts in those offices that that deal with land issues will be a part of that, um, including other, um, other entities such as Washoe, Sparks, Burnley and Carson City as well. Um, the purpose of this is to bring every staffer and every delegation of up to speed on the lands bill and what support we need to to get this passed through Congress. Um, so that's, I mean, those are some of the things we've been doing in in regard to the Lander County lands bill and and looking and looking at it, how do we get it passed through Congress? Not just introduced and passed through committee, uh, but our ultimate goal, of course, is to get the, uh, Lander County lands bill passed in Congress. Um, are there any questions on that? Because there's a few other, um, items, um, I would like to cover just briefly in regards to American Recovery Act and some of the federal funding priorities.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do, I do, Chris. Uh, this is Commissioner Waits. My understanding was that that we were ahead a lot, uh, of some of the counties, not all of them, but some of them. And I'm looking at some of the other lands bills, like Elko, which has got some different things in it and such, and I'm going, I thought we had already presented these to our our delegation. And and now it sounds like we're kind of waiting for everybody else to go all along and package it together. And I'm I'm going, I thought we were farther along than this. So do you feel like we're kind of reinventing the wheel and it's delaying us?
Um, not, not at all. And the reason I I say that is because of the current environment with the new delegation. Um, it it has been, or I'm sorry, the new administration, um, they they had to to come up with an approach and be put forward, put forward by Senator Rosen's office, uh, since, of course, she is the same party of 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 what the rest of Congress is. Um, so the successful way to get this across the finish line is looking at it in with regional partners to get that done. Also, I don't necessarily think it it puts us back at all. I think it puts us in a better position moving forward.
Okay, I just, I have some concerns because some of the other, some of the other counties have things in their land bills that I don't think we would go along with necessarily. And and so I'm going, um, what are you doing to negotiate on that? I mean, uh, do they all have lobbyists that are representing them or are you raising up, are you representing some of the others or are you just leaving it up to our delegation to kind of throw it all together in the hopper?
Well, the only, so Commissioner, I think the only holdup right now, honestly, is a Washoe County lands bill. Um, if I were to put a finger on it, uh, the rest of them are are put together. And I spoke to Elko. Um, I don't think they're doing anything with their land bill. So from my understanding, that they're not going to do that. Now, when I talk about wrapping these older bills all into one package, I I'm not saying that the Lander County lands bill is going to get lost in a shuffle. Um, they're going to go in as individual bills, but they're going to push them all through together.
Kyle?
Isn't this what we worked on in DC? Didn't you already present this to Rosen and?
Yes. Rosen is championing it, yes, and it has gone before them in the past.
We were already there.
Legislation, but this is being reintroduced by Rosen and there are updates to it. And so what he was discussing a few moments ago about the ranchers and issues, as you know, when things get brought up and there's things that aren't agreed upon, it has to be rewritten and renegotiated.
And Washoe County, I know, is an issue because they have some conflicts, um, for the, there.
Yeah, but I'm speaking specifically on Lander County.
Well, I know, but when he was talking, he was talking about the Washoe County. So if it's all lumped in together, if there's issues going on with Washoe County.
It will not hold us up because they're all individual bills. Each of us will go as our own, but just kind of all at the same time in one. So we are being reintroduced more than likely next week with the new language in there. So but as he stated, we just got the update, literally before I walked into this meeting. The Senator Rosen's office just sent us the new language.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so.
And, and this is, this is just me, and if you can hear me, I can add additional perspective because the summary is, uh, spot on. What happens with the Biden administration, uh, a whole new administration, a whole new Department of Interior at the same time? In in addition, each, each Congress, it it's, you have to reintroduce, introduce it with a new number. And one of the problems that we face in the West, uh, the average West, our friends in Congress and the Senate, but they think public lands are like a state park somewhere in Iowa, right? They they don't understand what we're talking about. And part of that is they tried to pass them, uh, you know, when we're talking lands, uh, again, whether it's in, New Mexico gets it, right? California, uh, maybe a little bit, uh, but mainly, you know, Arizona, New Mexico, Utah, Nevada. We we specialize in in our understanding of public land. So part of this also is timing with the new administration. But I do believe it was summarized well, but you're in a, uh, you're in a really good spot right now. Very positive.
It's just as, just to kind of touch on that, it's to re reintroduce or re-explain to the new members and just really put ourselves back out there so it gets the attention it deserves once that legislation is changed.
Okay, so we're standing alone as far as as the lands bill, but we're still waiting for just Washoe to come on board. Is that it with theirs and then our delegation can put it forward?
Chris, I'll let you answer.
In essence.
We lost you there.
I'm sorry, um. So, yeah, so the, so the, um, delegation, Nevada delegation would like to push those all through at the same time. So the Washoe County, um, in our estimation is the last, last bill to get, um, finalized. And they are working on that right now. Kelly Riddle, uh, with Senator Rosen's office is on top of that and working with them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions? All right.
No further questions.
Would you like me to cover the last few, few items I had on on that agenda?
Yes, please.
In regards to American Recovery Act? Okay, so, um, in regards to American Recovery Act, um, of course, COVID support, um, for businesses and municipalities, uh, we worked with your team, uh, to provide letters of support for direct and, uh, for direct state and local funding, uh, that was sent to the delegation and other congressional leaders, um, across the country, uh, making sure that there wasn't a clearinghouse through, uh, the state offices, um, for the funding to 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 have, I guess, added, uh, added parameters onto that funding. It was successful in that, um, and of course, that was in part, uh, due to Lander County as well sending out those letters. Um, the county is slated to get, um, just over a million dollars. Um, there's, we're still waiting on guidance, on how flexible those funds can be, but from everything we're hearing, that they're going to be able to use for operating expenses and all the above. So I think it's going to be, um, a very broad use of those funds. Uh, and, uh, I've been updating Kyla and Bert on all the guidance that I've received so far. So they've, they've issued some pre, pre, kind of pre-things to do, so we've sent that over to them as well. Um, there's also, uh, additional programs that we sent over, of course, is the Paycheck Protection Program, uh, for your businesses. Um, one of the newest, um, funds available is a restaurant revitalization fund, uh, that just came out, and I sent that information over. It covers bars and eateries and restaurants and and cafes and all the rest. So there's support there. Um, that's just to name a few. There'll be more rolling out and I'll submit those to the county as I see them. Um, and as John had said, there's tons of money that, uh, there's an open checkbook in DC right now, um, like it or love it or whatever the case may be. I think it's an opportune time for, uh, the county to take advantage of those. And that's why we also talked about putting together a federal funding priority list, uh, which we worked with, um, your team on that. And I think that was at the last, um, last commission meeting, uh, that those were discussed. Uh, there's tons of existing programs out there, um, through the USDA and, uh, the Economic Development Agency, Small Business Administration. And part of what we do at the Porter Group is we also try to pay for ourselves and try to find these available pockets of money that the county can de-utilize, um, and get access to that you may have not known about prior. So that's something that we're trying to do as our overall support for the county, not just on the lands bill, but looking at these other avenues as well. And then, of course, we're looking at economic development opportunities as well. Uh, we've, uh, partnered, uh, with the NMDA, um, the Northern Nevada Film Association, and created Nevada Technology Corridorium Prosperity Caucus, uh, which focuses on workforce development and economic development, um, but that's still in the works. And we also put together and, uh, are putting together a Nevada, Rural Nevada Roundtable as well to talk about, uh, issues of regional significance, uh, that we can work on as a, as a partnership, uh, with the Nevada delegation, but that's, uh, in the infancy stages. And that's what I have to report on.
Very good. Anybody have any questions?
Are we doing any work on our, like, Second Amendment legislation?
We, the Porter Group, we have not, um, but if if that's something of interest, um, we're happy to touch your team.
If I may, if I may add, we're big supporters of the Second Amendment and we'd love to chat more about it, uh, anytime.
Would you please, uh, request a copy of our resolution for the future if we have anything in that direction?
Absolutely, yes. Happy to.
Bert, do you have anything more for him? All right. Well, thank you guys very much. We appreciate, um, your time and the updates. Kyla, do you have any?
You're welcome. If I could add one more thing, sure?
Absolutely.
Um, earlier in the conversation, there was, um, talk about the library. Uh, within the American Recovery Act, they expanded the E-Rate program for emergency, um, connectivity funds. And I'm going to get more information to Kyla and Bert on that, uh, but within the next thirty to sixty days, we should see access to funds to expand, um, technology for your libraries and also your schools.
Very good. Good to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thanks, everyone. Again, this is John. We're, we appreciate and honor to be part of the family. We're available anytime. Just let us know. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Be safe. Bye.
Moving forward. Thank you, Kyla. For Public Works, for discussion of possible action to approve.
Kathy, we need to table number eleven.
Oh. So we're going table number eleven?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Go on, we're going to table number eleven. Go to, um, twelve, right?
Yep.
All right, twelve, okay. All right, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, um, the bid award to Crack Seal Project, P W P number L A dash two zero two one dash two oh one. Sierra Construction Corporate Base Bid, two hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and four dollars and twenty cents to include, um, alternate bid, twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents total bid, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars recommended, um, for acceptance. And Sierra Nevada Construction Corporate Base Bid, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifteen, not recommended acceptance. So go ahead.
I'm Don Prince, Public Works. This is Aaron Martinez, A&amp;M Engineering. He's working on this project.
So this project, uh, this crack seal is primarily, um, hilltop and towards that component of the portion of the community. A lot of these areas in, uh, for the crack seal are being addressed with just a crack seal. Um, and then it probably next year, the county would be looking at coming back and cake sealing across that crack sealed area. Um, but this particular project is just a crack seal. Um, what you're not accepting is a bid alternate of the one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, which was primarily a lot of patchwork. Uh, the county shifted its direction to potentially pave those roads in the coming years. So we didn't want to allocate funding to roads that would get future, uh, rehabilitations. So that's why, uh, that's not recommended to move forward. Uh, so in front of you would be the Sierra Nevada Construction Bid, uh, with the s- small bid alternate that was accepted of twenty-three thousand, which is essentially striping, uh, striping, excuse me.
Striping hilltop road.
Oh, wow.
Would you, would you, uh, explain what base bid means? Because.
Sure.
I don't like change orders.
You got it. You got it. So the contractor, uh, it has a base bid amount, um, for the contract that is basically the, uh, the base bid in this case is is what we wanted as a, as one project guaranteed. We wanted these quantities in this project completed. Uh, the bid alternates that you're seeing here are alternates that are essentially a bid also that the contractor allocates funds to, and then the county can pick and choose whether they actually want to proceed with that particular work. So that's the difference between the base bid and bid alternate. Um, but to talk about the change order component that you're referring to, um, a lot of our projects, and especially this one in particular, we, uh, the county invests a lot of time and money into making sure that we survey that project so that the quantities that we're utilizing are exactly what the contractor would then go check and replicate to us. So we've been doing your, uh, preventative maintenance program for a few years now and we have not had one change order for any of those components.
Yeah, we've got a bad taste in our mouth on the change orders.
Yeah, we all do, most certainly.
All right. Any other questions?
Do you have a recommendation on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We did, uh, provide a recommendation for a word on this. It would be for the, uh, base bid and bid alternate two in the total amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand one ninety-two, and I believe that should have been provided in your packet.
I'll make a motion, we approve the bid award for Crack Seal Project, P W P number L A twenty twenty-one two oh one. Sierra Nevada Construction, Inc., base bid, two hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents to include alternate bid, twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents. Total bid would be two fifty-nine one ninety-two, and that's, uh, the one that's being recommended by our Public Works.
I'll second that.
Brian made the motion, our second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
You guys are still on.
Oh, yeah. So, for, yeah, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, uh, the agreement between Lander County and Date Engineering for the Yellow Brick Road Sewer Project?
On what streets will we tie in on this side?
The, the sewer is just going to come off, I believe, that new road's Round Mountain.
Round Mountain.
Round Mountain, yeah. And it'll extend out. It won't go very far, a thousand feet or so, I believe. Was it just Marty Uvalde? How far was that?
A thousand.
Yeah.
So we have a consultant's fee not to exceed ninety-four thousand five hundred?
Are you here?
Yeah, it's all, what, it's all time and materials, T and M, not to exceed, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, with the not to exceed.
So we have, in the motion, we have the toll notes not to exceed, stated in there. Whoever makes the motion? Yeah, so it's released in the motion.
I'll make a motion. If there's no, is there any discussion on it?
Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between Lander County and Day Engineering for the Yellow Brick Road Sewer Project with a time and material not to exceed ninety-four thousand dollars and five hundred.
Second.
All right, so Brian made the motion. Art's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Moving forward. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the agreement between Lander County and Day Engineering for the Yellow Brick Road Water Project.
It's basically the same, except it's going to tie in there from, oh, gosh, Round Mountain to twenty-six. Then once we get this done, then we can pave it.
Same thing, ninety-four thousand five hundred. I'm just looking at the itemization. Any discussion on it?
Anybody have anything? Kathy, do you have anything?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between Lander County and Day Engineering for the Yellow Brick Road Water Project with a time and material not to exceed ninety-four thousand five hundred.
All right. All right. Brian made the motion. Art's second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Very good. Thanks, Dylan.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I missed something. What did we do with number eleven?
Tabled it.
We tabled it.
We tabled it till next time?
Yes.
Because we only had one, no, we had two bidders on that, didn't we?
No, we-
It was tabled because we had a misprint in there. We had Crack Seal instead of Cape Seal. So misread on the gender request, so.
But we can have it by-
No sweat. We'll have it back on the next one.
In two weeks. Great. Thank you.
All right. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, continuation of support of Nevada Civil Air Patrol by reviewing our ad in their newspaper.
Do we have anybody on the line for Nevada Civil Air Patrol?
I just have one question if we don't have anybody on the line. Because we do this every year, and they get, you know, a lot of support. They don't ask a whole lot from us, just the one advertise, advertisement. But my question was whether this publication is just one-time publication? Because, I mean, it's very inexpensive, five hundred and ninety-five dollars, and going one-time publication. Maybe we could ask that they send us a copy?
Ask Ron. He's-
I do get copies of that. We are-
Ron, under for the record, the Sheriff's Department is involved with Civil Air Patrol. We do pay for a quarter page ad, I believe, a small ad every year. And I do believe we get more than one of the booklets, more than one time a year, maybe one or two.
Is it published, like, quarterly or biannually, maybe, or something like that?
I think so, Brian. I get them and look at them and give them to the officers to look at, so. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I wonder if it was just one time or if it was, like, set on different basis.
I can't tell you exactly on that. I do see it, so.
Because they don't ask for much, but I would like to see a copy sometime.
No, but they're a good resource.
Yeah, that's true.
Do we use them any times for search and rescue?
Yes, we've used them quite a bit, to be honest with you.
Because I know when I went to a training back in '06 for search and rescue, they were talking about a search down in Calle Ani, Peo, and the pilot was saying that seven miles away, he could read that emblem on your shirt.
Sure. They've got some nice equipment, some of their aircraft.
Oh, yeah. We need support.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve our continuation of support for Nevada Civil Air Patrol by renewing our ad in the paper, and I believe it was for five hundred and ninety-five dollars, if I'm right on that.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Page, half-page color ad, yes.
I'll second the motion.
Kathy made the motion. Brian's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. So Bureau of Land Management, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove Resolution 2021-10 in support of the Nevada wildfire awareness. But do I have to say wildlife? Because that's what this says, or can I say-
No, we amended it.
Okay, so for wildfire awareness campaign?
I think there's a Brad on those that was not included.
Brad, is that what you said? Brad, are you online?
Yes, Sarah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you.
Would you like me to read the resolution?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. I've got a copy in front of me here. This will be the Lander County Resolution in support of the Nevada wildfire awareness campaign made through October. Whereas wildfire significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic, and social well-being, whereas residents of Nevada fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in high-fire hazard areas. Whereas residents can save precious time in evacuation preparing a go-bag and a family evacuation plan ahead of time. And whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation and surrounding the home and construction and maintenance to resist ignition. And whereas residents need to work together to prepare their homes and communities to survive wildfire and commit to become fire-adapted. Therefore, the Lander County Board of Commissioners proclaiming the period of May through October as the Nevada wildfire awareness campaign. This is just a means to educate and call for residents of Lander County to act now to reduce the wildfire threat and prepare for wildfire. And I know that the county commissioners have passed the Nevada wildfire awareness month proclamations in the past, but as fire seasons are extending and becoming longer, that's why we changed it not just a month, but a campaign made through October.
Thank you, Brad. With that, I will make a motion that we approve Resolution 2021-10 as read before the commission and passed and adopted the twenty-second day of April, 2021, and authorize our chair to sign.
All right, you have a second?
Okay. I have a question.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, yeah. Do you support grazing?
Yes, it is. We are doing a couple plots in the Winamaka area, and we're doing a study on the impact of grazing and the spread of invasive weeds like cheatgrass and things like that. So it is one of the tools that we can use to reduce the amount of fuels in an area and use those for fire breaks.
Okay.
So Kathy made the motion. You have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. So with discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the full-time fees to be waived for the Northern Nevada Aquatics?
I might make a suggestion. If we put something in our backups, make sure we can read them. There's two documents you can't even, can't read it, which is the Department of Taxation and exempt organizations form, so just FYI.
Okay. Gallett put that together. I'll make sure she knows. And I think those are the 501(c)(3) paperwork from Northern Nevada, I'd imagine. Okay. So in the past, Sean Baker for the record, Commissioner, good morning. In the past, the mines funded this, where they actually paid for the full-time for the swim team. That's coming to an end. The R501(c)(3). So the idea was maybe Lander County can waive the fees for the one-hour full-time that the swim team uses. And so I'll put it back for you guys for discussion.
Do you want to explain to them what the swim team is comprised of and who its members are and how many different counties they come from?
Okay, so Northern Nevada Aquatics is actually ranging from, thank you, Counselor. There's twenty kids on the team from Battle Mountain. One of the kids from Battle Mountain is actually number one in the state in one of his events and has competed in Las Vegas and in Reno. My children are on there, just for full clarity. And any part of that where I have no problem paying for my kids for full-time. So, but there are some kids on our team that actually do need this, and parents can't afford for them to participate in this. But you're talking Reno, Minden, Tahoe, Winamaka, Humboldt County's part of Northern Nevada, Battle Mountain.
Is this a school sanctioned?
It's not.
It's not, okay.
So, and that's the other thing, Commissioner, the schools, we have an interlocal agreement with the schools where they get to use county facilities for free, or they pay, I think, five hundred bucks a year, or whatever it is. They are not part of the school interlocal agreement, so they do not follow under that.
Bert, just, Sean jogged my memory on the agreement with the school district. That's an old agreement. Maybe we need to bring that forward because they fell upon hard times a couple of years back, so just to jog my memory. How much were they paying, Sean, for the alley?
The mines.
So they actually did a lump sum, and it was about twenty-five hundred bucks, which covered those twenty kids or so for over the last year or two. But when they redid, when it's not Newmont, no more, Barrick, they're all one now, and now they're kind of cutting back on the money they're putting forward.
Sean, another question. Is the school, is the pools closed to everybody else when they're in there?
During that hour time, yes. That's why it was paid for.
So, so we're waiving the fee, basically closing the pool down to Lander County citizens while this-
For a swim team, for, but it's no different than when we close the gym down for the school when they do volleyball or basketball. We put on basketball tournaments for all day.
Commissioner needs to know exactly what it is.
Okay. But I mean, it's no different than what we do for the school kids now.
Right. No, I think, I think-
And if we want to bring back the school agreement-
We don't need the twenty-five hundred dollars. We can afford to waive that easily. It's for kids. It's for the kids.
And how long does that season last?
It's year-round.
Year-round, and how many estimate, you might not know, but how many estimated families come when we hold an event here? How many extra people does that bring to our community?
So we've only held one event here for the actual swim team event. And it would bring, it brought families from Winamaka and Elko, and I would say roughly fifty or sixty families.
Okay, so they're eating in our restaurants.
These, these events, if we continue with this, will draw big crowds. Joan Westover's grandson is a swimmer, and they'll get two, three hundred people at their events.
Wow.
And we're right on eighty.
Got you down.
So I'll make a motion that we waive the fee for the Northern Nevada Aquatics.
And do we have an amount of what we estimate those fees to be, or no? It's just the twenty-five hundred bucks that the mine donated?
Well, that is for about two years. So you're looking at, if you want to really estimate it out, it's about a hundred bucks a month, twelve hundred bucks a year.
Okay.
So twenty-four hundred bucks for two years, twenty-five hundred.
I'll second the motion.
So is this for a two-year period you're asking?
I didn't agendize that that way, but it would be nice if they want to put that in the motion.
They need to go with two years, so. So I'm just asking what the time is.
Commissioner, will you amend that for two years?
Yeah, okay. I'll redo my agenda. I'll reword it. Waive the fees for the Northern Nevada Aquatics swim team for two years.
Hey, Ted, so I have a question. Being that they are a 501(c)(3), what have we done with the other 501(c)(3)'s? Haven't we made them come to us and ask in the form of a grant, rather than like what we're doing, this format we're using now?
Yes.
So it wouldn't necessarily be a proper way of doing it, would it be? Because I think we-
Well, they can ask for a grant.
They could come and ask for fees to be waived as opposed to a grant as well.
Oh, got you.
So there could be just an alternate way of doing it.
Thank you for clarifying that. I see that. Thank you. I second the motion.
The organization should have been here to do it.
So.
Just saying.
All right, so Art made the motion. Brian's second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you. I'm on for the next one, too, though.
Next time, bring the kids with you.
I will, yes.
Aren't they in school?
They're actually, she's working right now.
So for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, waiving the pool fees for Lander County citizens six years of age or older.
So this, I put this on, this was a discussion between the senior center and me and the county manager. I don't have the authority to waive fees for anyone, but they were trying to put a wellness program together for the senior citizens that are, that use the senior center. And in doing so, the discussion was they would use, get the fees waived for water aerobics or walking in the gym. But in discussions with that, why not do it for all the seniors of Lander County or Lander County citizens?
I think it's a great idea. Falls right in hand with our health resolutions. We're promoting health with our seniors, so I think.
So you're legally asked to change pool policy, right?
Yes.
I have a question. Aren't seniors fifty-five years and older? Isn't that the designation, fifty-five years old? If somebody beats a senior.
Careful, Art. I'm getting close to that.
I got the age from the senior center director. She's the one who gave me that.
It's always been sixty. Even with the golf course at sixty, so.
I mean, ERP starts at fifty, but you're right. That's because of the senior center, as the break is at sixty.
So.
So for that, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve waiving pool fees for Lander County citizens sixty years of age or older.
All right, you guys.
By modifying both, huh, pool policy?
Oh, by, and we'll modify our pool policy. Just stay.
Second.
Sorry. Brian made the motion. Art's second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I, but I have a question. Would this, this would apply to Austin also?
It says-
Because this is Lander County.
Yep, Lander County pools.
Just to make sure it's on the record.
And Austin pools falls under Direct Center Two, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got it. All right, so I'll be taking over the meeting since Kathy's got to step out and Art had eye surgery. Can't read too well, so I'm the lucky guy. So number nineteen, PC Computing, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove a site, license agreement between Lander County and Pathfinder USA Incorporated DBA, PC Computing for equipment on the Lander County Courthouse and Administration Building, Lander County Sheriff Substation in Austin, Nevada, and the Lander County Water Tower. Floor's yours.
Hello. So, yeah, we've been working with Ted to get contracts in place in order to put up equipment to better serve our customers here in Battle Mountain. We're also in the process of moving forward with something in Austin. Currently, in Austin, we have a wireless mesh system, which really isn't very good and only serves like four people. It is our intention in the next twelve to eighteen months to kind of build that out. We have, like I said, been working with Mr. Herrera to get a lease in place so that we can put equipment up on the water tower, which will allow us to better serve that side of town on the other side of freeway, and also better serve the Hilltop area.
Don't you have the little trailer up here above the gun range?
That is not us.
That's not you?
Nope. The only thing that we currently have- Nope, the only thing that we currently have is on top of the courthouse, and we also have a, uh, repeater site over at where Maverick is about to expand into, which really kind of, kind of threw a monkey wrench in there.
Actually, what we've had prior to this is two separate contracts. And one was for Battle Mountain, one was for Austin, and it was the Au-Auston Sheriff's Department. And then we had one for Battle Mountain, which is the courthouse and, and Battle Mountain Sheriff's Department. And contained in those contracts was an offset for services they provided to the town, got very complicated, billing got very complicated, everything got very complicated. What I've done is I've divided the contract, so this is a contract for their, a licensed site fee. They are asking to put their equipment in three separate places in Lander County, and they are paying a site fee for each one. It has nothing to do with any services they are providing us, only services we are providing them, which is a site to put their equipment. And there was one contract in backup that, that covers all three sites.
So, just, and I, I could be just overlooking it, let me see, or just, so I see here we've got our, um, the site fees of two-fifty, fifty, and two-fifty, is that a annual or a monthly?
That's annual.
Annual?
No.
No, it's monthly, yeah, it's monthly.
It's a, and, and the way that it's been...
Okay, I see it right here, I got it, yeah.
The way that it's been done in the past, it's been a monthly decrease on the bill.
Right.
Now, I see the contract is actually four years, is that what we had before with them?
Hey, can I get everybody to speak up, they can't hear you on the recording?
Yes.
I'm not sure, I think it's you guys are talking about.
It was four years, yes. It was, well, it was really five years, so, we can't, I don't do any more five-year contracts, so, so we take, well, with the thirty-day out.
Yeah.
Now, if, if we do take, and I want this on the record, if, since they are providing their equipment, is providing services to the citizens of Lander County. If for some reason we were not satisfied with their services or with, with their company and gave them a thirty-day out, I've, uh, you need to recognize that we would have to give them up to six months in order to completely find another location to put their equipment. So it's a thirty-days-out on paper, but the knowledge that it's going to take them longer than thirty days, otherwise we're depriving our citizens of service for up to four or five months.
Okay, great. Any other discussion?
Do you understand that, what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but I know, um, like I said, it's a very small amount of people that are, are with them right now, and I know two that have just gone with another company, so if you had four, you might be down to two now, I mean, they're...
That's internet.
That's internet, completely different.
Yeah, with the internet, so if they, if they're putting up their, their equipment to bring us these things, what if we don't have anybody there? Do you still want the equipment?
They're just paying for...
Just to be there.
It's a site fee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, it's a site fee.
And the, the only thing that...
It's like a billboard.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, pretty much.
But if we gave them a thirty-day, if we gave them a thirty-day notice, you know, I would hope that the county commissioners would also, uh, uh, give them enough time to, uh, find another site and move their equipment.
Okay, now if there's no more discussion, is there public comment on it?
Uh, Laura Duval, um, I'm going to speak in this particular item as a...
Laura, could you come up so that it's recorded?
Laura Duval, I'm going to speak as a business owner, uh, I've been utilizing their internet service for more than ten years, and I'm way out in Hilltop, and there is no other option for me, and without their service, I'm out of business. I'd have to rent something in town and relocate, um, their service has been absolutely outstanding for my purpose, because I have to have a really fast upload speed as well as the download in order to run my business. So, I've been extremely pleased with their service, and they do provide it for a lot of people in areas where you have no other options whatsoever. I've checked into multiple, it's used now, different ones.
We're slightly off, I think, I think this is not for internet service, this is for site fee, I'm at...
Right, but it's related to if they, you know...
Well, if they don't have one, what Laura's saying, excuse me.
Then I don't have an option, then I don't have a business.
If, if we don't allow one, she's not going to get.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry, so it's kind of related, yeah.
That's all right.
Well, thank you for your public comment. Is there any more public comment? Okay, hearing none, oh, sorry, Robert.
Robert, quick for the Sheriff's Office, I have a question since they brought up that they're building out the system in Austin, of what type of space in our building are they going to require?
Not much more than what's already there.
Okay.
Um, if we put in anything new, it would, it would be a router and a possible radio up on the roof shooting to a repeater site.
Okay.
Okay, any, if there's no more public comment, I'll open it for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, site location agreement between Lander County and Pathfinders USA Inc., EBA PC Computing.
Do I have a second? Okay, so Art, uh, made the motion, JR seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And JR, those antennas on, in, on that, uh, trailer up behind the gun range, that's the TV board. I think we're going to bring the TV board forward in the future and find out what's going on.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, we'll go to twenty-one, University of Nevada Reno Extension Community and Economic Development for discussion and update only regarding the Nevada Economic Assessment Project, NEPA. Or NE, sorry.
And I do believe we should have somebody on the, on the phone to do a presentation, I did ask them, they said that this could be up to a two-hour presentation, so I asked them to keep it roughly to thirty minutes on the, on the pointed topic, but it is the commission's discretion on how far they'd like it to go.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
I think, yeah, I'm, I'm for short because it's so difficult on the phone, if they were here personally, that's easy to follow, but I'll tell you, if the way phones cut out and in and mumble, um, I, I don't think we can handle any more than a half an hour.
At a max, I'm the same way, it's, it's painful to try to understand what you're saying.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, let's go ahead and continue, we'll let you know.
Uh, yes, hi, so, uh, yes, for the record, Joseph Lednicki with the University of Nevada Extension Community Economic Development Department. Um, no, the, uh, the, this presentation should only last about twenty minutes or so, I'm not sure where the two hours came from. Um, so, yeah, so the Nevada, uh, Economic Assessment Project is a partnership of a number of organizations throughout the, uh, university, including the Extension Cabinet and the University Center for Economic Development, uh, along with some state partners, including, uh, NICO and Nevada Association of Engineers, uh, US Forest Service, BLM, and, uh, Rural Development.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I truly cannot understand what you're saying. I, I, are any of the rest of you just as confused? I don't think this is going to work over the phone for us, I truly don't. We have your information, we have reviewed it, if you just want to highlight something, um, because there's no way you're going to be able to go over this with our connection like this.
Um, okay, let me see, I'm also connected on the internet one, so let me try that instead, one moment.
No worries.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from it in person, honestly, I just, I, these phone, these phone things are frustrating. And no disrespect meant, but is there any way we could possibly put this on a future agenda where you guys attend our board meeting in person?
Um, perhaps, uh, the problem that we have is, uh, university, uh, regulations regarding travel currently. But I see the issue here, so I will email with the county manager and try to set something else up better.
We don't have any restrictions here, and you're welcome to come.
Well, thank you very much, sir, uh, and my apologies for this not working.
Okay, so with that, we'll just, uh...
I'll make a motion that we table this until the, the, uh, people associated with this item can come and make a presentation.
Yeah, you can just table it, Art. And then we'll look at, uh, just get, uh, get in contact with our administration office and they can put you on a future agenda if that works out for you, sir.
Thank you, my apologies.
Okay, no worries, thank you.
Ours too, thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, so correspondence, reports, and future agenda items. So, um, one thing we might want to look into is, uh, going back to these vaccines and how, uh, none of these vaccines companies can be sued, they're not held accountable for the harm that they cause in a patient or a person. How is that going to reflect, uh, for our county employees who have received the, the, uh, basically the COVID vaccine before our resolutions, all this information has gotten out? If they become ill, are they going to take a stance that they're not going to cover us, are they going to cover us? Uh, that might be something we want to look into possibly.
Vote for insurance and life insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, it's just safe, you know, and I hope that it doesn't happen, yeah, if somebody, one of our county employees passes away because they did take it, is life, is their life insurance through our program going to cover them? And we will look in to see if our, uh, life insurance has a pandemic clause or not, okay?
And the other thing is the, uh, Lander County School District Agreement with the county on use of county facilities, I'd like to see that brought.
It isn't that they necessarily have a pandemic clause, it's just that they don't exclude it, that's what we're looking for.
And then, uh, maybe, uh, our county manager and our legal counsel can get together and maybe look at this ordinance on this whole issue that I brought up as far as any, anybody in this county pushing this on anybody, um, is it possible to put an ordinance where it becomes a crime in our county to do so?
Well, on face value, isn't it a violation of the Constitution?
Absolutely, it is.
That's how I'd say it.
But maybe we can make that resolution have some more teeth, because I, I really liked how it was written and...
Violation would be a violation of civil rights.
Civil rights, exactly.
Civil rights violation?
And, uh, what that covers is, Constitution covers state action against the citizens. It doesn't cover action by a business or somebody else against the citizen, that would have to be, that would have to be codified. So I, I don't, I'm not taking Brian's, uh, suggestion as, what do we do against the state of Nevada or the federal government?
No.
Because we can't do anything.
No, I'm saying within our, right.
But we have to do a ordinance to protect our citizens against other citizens or businesses.
Or businesses or even county agencies for that, man, we've, we've, we've ma, we've basically taken a stand, we've made a, a fact of record. So what does happen if, uh, somebody passes away or somebody becomes, becomes deathly ill because of that, where's our liability? You know what I'm saying, it's like this sets the message that we're serious about this and we're not going to tolerate it within our county borders.
Right.
So anyway, those are some, some of my ideas.
Yeah, I agree, Brian.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, public comment. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, good. Uh, Art made the motion, Patty seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
This conference is no longer being recorded.